I'm gonna call the meeting to work for the August 3rd, 2021 Vol. 14 Planning Board. So the first up is the public hearing on the Bisson CUP application. If Attorney Bruton would like to present, it'd be great.
Great, thank you. My name is FX Bruton, I'm in Berriby in Dover. And I'm here representing Joan Bisson, who's the owner of the property. With me is Bob Carrier, who's gonna be the contractor. And Vicki is here, and she's Joan's daughter. So if you have any questions, hit me over the head, stop me, and we'll go through those questions. This project was in front of the July ZBA. If you look at the drawing, you'll see that there's two spots where the proposed structure, or the addition to the single-family home, will encroach upon a 15-yard setback. That variance was approved, so we're here tonight and hopeful that we can get a conditional use permit to allow an ADU unit. Ms. Bisson is approaching 80.
She'll be 80 in October.
Right. So the theory is, you know, she'd like to prepare for that moment when it should be difficult for her to kind of take care of herself. She's actually gonna convey the property to her granddaughter, who will live on the premises, so it'll be owner-occupied. She intends to build the garage, as depicted on the plans. And then, within the garage, there'll be an access point to the upstairs. And in the upstairs, there'll be an ADU unit. The ADU unit will be less than 750 square feet, which is part of your regulations. In addition, the ADU will share new utilities and services of the main structure, and it will obviously look as though it's part of the main structure, which is part of your requirements as well. It will be integrated with an access point, so that someone who's in the ADU can go into the single-family home, which is part of your requirements as well. So generally speaking, this is fairly straightforward, in terms of the hard part for us was talking to the ZBA about the side yard setback. The best part about that is, that a butter, next to Ms. Bisson submitted a letter that you have a copy of, and he expressed his full support. And that was important to Ms. Bisson, but also, obviously, to the ZBA. So it's fairly straightforward. I think the renderings certainly depict that this is going to be an integrated structure with the single-family home, which is exactly what you're looking for. It's certainly going to be a great assistance to Ms. Bisson. The one thing I'll point out is, I'm making that representation that her grandchild would be there. I'm not saying that to say that there has to be that familial connection. You may recall, ADUs used to require that, but they don't anymore. It's just by coincidence, so I just wanted to kind of make that footnote. So if you have any questions for us, we're more than happy to answer those questions. Hopefully, it's fairly straightforward application for you tonight.
Well, thank you very much. This was before the ZBA, it was unanimously approved. Before I ask the board any questions, Mr. Clark, do you have any comment on it?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to confirm, I know you wrote in the application that ADU will comply with all-town ADU regulations located above the garage. So you confirmed that you went down that list, it was like 16?
Right, and I can go through the list if you'd like. But I did do that.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine. If the board wants, that's okay, but I'm fine, thank you.
And we agree that, you know, some of these on the list, as you know, are more enforcement issues. Like, you can't do the following after the fact, you gotta get your permits, obviously. And some of them are, and most of them are what I just said. So, you know, the utilities and things like that are the ones that you wouldn't intuitively think about, that's why I decided to mention, but I'm happy to go through that list if you'd like. But yeah, it's on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Haynes, any questions for the applicant?
No concerns, comments at all, not a problem at all.
All right, Sue, any questions for the applicant?
No, not at all.
All right. David, you're an alternate, is that correct? Any questions for the applicant?
Our good curators accessing from the main house, is that through the garage?
Yes, it is, yes, exactly.
Just around the little... That's correct, yep. And, not that this is relevant, but we're gonna put a chair lift on the stairs to go into the... Okay.
Caroline, any questions?
Could you speak to the septic situation for the property?
Sure, I specifically asked the engineer, well, actually, I asked Kevin McNamee, who's not an engineer, but he's with the engineering firm, Civil Works. And I asked if they had checked to make sure that we meet all those state regulations with respect to septic, and he confirmed that we do. He's not here right now, but he did confirm that, and Mr. Clark can, you know, when he gets the building permit, can, I guess, you know, double-check that, I guess, if you'd like. But I did ask him specifically, and he did confirm that that was the case.
All right, okay. Richard, any questions for Attorney Bruton?
I do not, no. I know, I think it was fine to me, I'm very satisfied.
Fantastic. All right, well, at this point, I'll open up for the public hearing. I don't think we have any members of the public here that want to... But if there are, somewhere, we'll... All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I don't, although I'll ask, are there any further comments or questions for the board? I don't think so, all right. So would someone like to make a motion to approve the application?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Clark?
You have to accept it first, right?
I'm sorry.
A little bit, we accept the application.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I look for a motion to approve or deny the application.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, congratulations.
Great, thank you very much, yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Truly very happy.
Oh, yeah.
Soon.
I'll go call her now.
Have a wonderful night, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you guys, bye.
All right. In terms of other business, anyone, folks get a chance to look at the minutes from July 6th, 2021? All right.
A little bit wakes up the minutes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously, is there any...
I think you're abstaining.
I'm sorry.
I'm abstaining, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any correspondence?
No.
There actually is correspondence, but I forgot to bring it in, which is, I got a letter, and I'm hoping you got it too. I never get correspondence from the planning board at home, but I got a letter from the state of New Hampshire.
I don't know what you might be referring to.
It was addressed to the planning chair, and I just got it in the mail the other day, and I forgot it, I meant to bring it with me, and I apologize. I will scan it tomorrow and send it to everybody.
That would be helpful, okay.
And I apologize. I think it had to do with roadwork.
There was, okay, so there was not anything specifically addressed to the planning board, but there was correspondence that, interestingly enough, actually, perhaps it did, I apologize, perhaps it did address the planning board. I know that it addressed the Conservation Commission, but it addressed the planning board because we may have a historical district, and that is the premise under which the Department of Transportation was notifying us that they intend to pave some of the state roads in town. And in light of that paving plan, which they didn't outline really what parts of what roads, but some of the state roads in town, they, at least as far as the Conservation Commission, would like feedback about invasive species and other work that maybe would, you know, at the side of the road, that they might consider at the same time. Whereas, from the planning board perspective, any historical markers or things that may otherwise fall under our consideration, that we would want to bring to the state's attention, of which I'm not aware of any, but we don't have a historical permission to be aware of that, which is probably why the planning board was notified.
Okay, all right, and it's the first I've ever gotten correspondence addressed as chair of the board to my personal residence, so...
And I can't say why that might be, because that is certainly not our official address of record for appointed officials. I'll just say that.
Okay, all right, okay.
Can you access state roads beyond Main Street, Group 4? Refresh my memory, what else could...
Front Street between Main Street and South Berwick, only not the other side. Main Street, Roberts Road, Silver Street, Goodwin, Rollins, Summersworth Road.
Really, all that, okay.
I will make a note, though, to scan it and email it to the board tomorrow, I apologize. I meant to bring it in, and I forgot. So, Sarah, are you going to talk about the noticing requirement issue?
Yeah, so I'm gonna just read you really quickly an email that I sent to Caroline and Tom. So, actually, first I'm gonna just say, so Foster's Daily, we have a requirement that all newer applications require newspaper notification. This is not, this is a, it's not required by the state. The state requires posting or publication, so you can satisfy the noticing need by posting around town at like the post office, the library, the town hall. In our regs, we went with publication, and I talked with Mike Garaby, as you know, lives next to Liz. So anyways, he said, when he was chair, he had addressed the board about possibly changing the regulations to require just posting and to not require publication. And at that time, I believe it was Ed Jansen was like, no, he believed that it should be in the newspaper. Fast forward to today, Foster's Daily Democrat has been acquired by a company, I'm not really even sure where they're out of, they're called Gannett Publications. They are very, very difficult to get in touch with. So it used to be that I would just email Foster, they would, you know, confirm that they were gonna post it and the date, and then they had a website where I could go and print a tear sheet. Like, with Gannett, like, I don't even hear back from this company to confirm that things have been published. They have no idea where Rollinsford is, like, a couple of times, they've gone, they've been about to post in the Portsmouth Herald, rather than Foster's Daily Democrat, not knowing our communities, and like, what's our local paper? So anyways, so long story short, I guess, is I would like the board to consider changing our regulations to require posting rather than publication of newspaper, or planning board notices, or at least to talk about it, to think about it. I'm not sure how many people read the Foster's Daily Democrat.
I feel like it's a dying medium.
Yeah.
Really, it really is. I mean, most people even subscribe online to a distribution email, I mean, a newspaper, they won't even get the actual print anymore. I read, I support that a lot.
We can't, we can't change it for the ZBA, it is a state requirement that you publish in a newspaper of record, any notices of any ZBA hearings. So we're just kind of stuck there, but where we have this option with the planning board, it also saves applicants $250, if that's a consideration for anybody.
Is a requirement of what newspaper? I mean, I realize it has to be a local newspaper, but is there a smaller circulation newspaper that services Dover area? Not really, is there?
No.
Now, at Seacoast, you got some smaller Seacoast papers, I understand, but...
The Coffee Times?
I don't think you can call that a newspaper, though.
That's like, seriously, the only other media that I can think that is even around.
What about the Portsmouth Herald? I mean, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of doing the posting, but...
Same owners.
Same owner?
It's the same situation, yeah.
It's really not as a whole problem either, right?
No, I agree.
Yeah, I don't think people in our, our community yet. I mean, they would tend to get the, I think, the Boston Globe and Foster's, rather than like the Portsmouth Herald.
And do you know what other towns are doing, like Dover or Summersworth?
That I, that I can't tell you.
So I think of Dover still advertising, but I didn't even realize that was an option. And I think it makes a lot of sense, especially with the confusion between the paper and Sarah, they don't even respond to her.
Right, no, I, I think it's a great idea. I don't have a problem with it, and I agree with the whole dying, dying media analysis.
Has the pricing increased since they've been purchased? Is that another change?
It does not appear that it's increased, which does not mean it's inexpensive.
No, it never was, no, it never was.
No.
ADU and a corporation, it's not gonna be your servicing company.
No, we're still, our fee is still covering the postings.
We adapted our fee some time back, we sort of updated them actually, great.
Like, three years ago, yeah.
So that's...
Where is this company up from?
I think they're out of Indiana, I believe.
They're, they're national, yeah, they're definitely national.
Definitely not anywhere that we don't know, I mean...
No, they're not local, no.
So my only thought about it is, how is the fee structure, what, the language of the fee structure? So where you say, it would save the applicants money, like, it probably is worth the planning board officially deleting the fee, in addition to deleting the publishing requirement, just for clarity that, you know, just to get the fee off the record, and if that makes sense, that just seems like clean housekeeping to me.
Well, does it require multiple outlets, like, public posting as well as publication?
No, it's, it's, so the RSA says...
So one, one, one...
What is the RSA, if you don't mind?
Acceptable?
It's our, yeah, so it's RSA 676:7, and it says, notice to the general public shall also be given at the same time by posting or publication as required by the subdivision regulations.
Though we do always post it also.
Right, but that's using two vehicles that should be information, we're only required to really do one.
Right, correct.
And what is posting defined as?
Putting up public notice in public.
At least two regular places, so for, for...
Town Hall and Post Office.
Town Hall and Post Office, and then, we do the website also, but that is kind of just extra.
And the library, the library, of always.
But shows due diligence, it shows we're doing our best to avoid that.
Oh, yeah, we're absolutely.
If we're posting before places, it only requires one, actually, posting in five places, oh, two places.
Paper requires two.
Paper requires two.
And what it costs, I think they also do the Santa Falls Quarterly, can we do that?
You mean the biannual?
Is it bi, I thought it was quarterly?
Okay.
It would have to, like, plan.
You're right, they wouldn't do it.
Once upon a time, the schoolchildren voted on the name of that publication, and it was allowed to stick, so it is a little confusing.
Yes, no, it's a good point. Okay.
I have a quick question for you, Tom, like, so how do you, how do you amend the regulations? Is it required, does it require a public hearing?
Yes, I think in the planning board, on the subdivision, uh, site review regs, it's just one public hearing. If it were zoning, I think it'd be two or three, but...
Well, zoning, you can't change it anyway.
Well, you, you, it goes to town meeting, but it does require two public hearings.
No, this is, these, these requirements are only posted in the regulations, not in the ordinances.
So the board, the board can change them, but I think they still have to have a public hearing.
Okay, so maybe we could do that next month?
Sure. So the town has a Facebook page, right? Well, the, I mean, the board's probably has a Facebook page, so...
It was a, the same volunteer who runs the website runs the plain old Rollinsford Facebook page that's closed to comments. No, not that one, it isn't the plain, just Rollinsford, it's closed to comments. So typically, when postings go out via email, they're also on the Facebook page. I don't know that they all go out that way necessarily, both ways, but the page exists, is all I can really say to it.
Okay. Should we have had a public hearing?
Great.
Good idea.
All right. Do we have any idea of anything coming in for next month, aside from...
I have, I have not seen any applications. ZBA has got a couple of things coming. So I did hear from Josh Landzetta, and he has finally everything for the Norton application, but they missed the deadline for August, so that's September. So nothing for ZBA in August, but I also got a request for a special exception application, so, and they also know the deadline, so that may also come up in September.
What is the subject of the application?
For, for Norton, they need like 18 variances. I mean, they need, I could just pick out all, like, that land, remember?
On, on planning.
Yeah, remember he came, he came to planning, and it was like, yeah. So they're trying to like straighten out their situation over there. An exception?
No, she never mentioned what she was trying to do.
But that's Wysco, float up, that's one, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's another block, that's a significant...
We should speak out, turn on that, till we have the same application. That's one ZBA version.
Yeah, that's a special exception.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's all I know about.
Okay, very good. All right, well, thank you for all coming tonight, again, please.
I, I do, just in my mind, to clarify, pocket zoning within a zone, something that used to happen a while ago, I just want to educate myself a little more on pocket zoning, like, let's say something is zoned, either residential, commercial, industrial, and the term pocket zoning comes up. I have an understanding of it, but I'd like to hear from you, Tom, on your interpretation of pocket zoning.
I've heard it referred to as spot zoning.
Spot zoning, pocket zoning, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, it's the procedure whereby the board would amend a particular section of the, of the, of any zoning district, and to allow a specific use where it's not allowed in the surrounding zoning district. It's...
So it's truly an exception within a zoned area?
Yeah, it would, I mean, it's, I think it's illegal.
In public perception on something like pocket, spot zoning?
I don't remember anyone having any kind of discussion or raising any concerns.
And did we do that at one point in time, pocket zoning, spot zoning, anything like that?
Oh, I don't think so. I mean, town's been around a long time, but I don't think so.
I thought I remember hearing tossed around a while back, something to do around at least certain exceptions permitted within a zone that's obviously not an approved use or something like that, but that's never happened in any timeframe that you've ever aware of.
I'm not aware of it, no.
I, I wonder what the application would be, where you wouldn't either, A, go to the zoning board for an exception, or B, rezone the whole area?
One of the conversations way back when I raised out about, we don't do pocket zoning anymore, told, tells them once how we did it.
Yeah.
So that's why I didn't know what, what's the circumstances and what the public perception is of, you get to do something, but I don't, we're neighbors.
Right, I, I always thought it was the opposite, which is, and I haven't looked at the term in a while, but let's say you have 10 properties in a zone, and you pass a new zoning ordinance that isolates one of them, as opposed to the others, which is kind of the same way, but to make it more restrictive, I've always thought that was the way the spot zoning...
I thought, well, me, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we're wrong.
I think it's, if, if, it kind of is reminiscent to me of a TIF district, like, trying to target maybe a dilapidated building or a dilapidated block for economic development. So when, when an area is so past being something that any investor is coming in to develop, and yet it's an eyesore for the community, or it's no longer on the tax base and it belongs to the town, or something like that, you could target a bunch of opportunity, economic opportunity to that one little area. So for that reason, you might make an exception, because you really want to entice a developer to...
From a positive aspect, to enhance or, or better, better a situation.
Yes, but I think that you would handle it under the provisions of a TIF district, a tax incentivization, a tax incentive, incentivization district.
Tax, yeah.
Tax incentive fund, you know, so you keep funds separate. In other words, the tax base freezes on that property at the lower level for a period of time, while it's getting developed and improving, that's the incentive.
So that wasn't my understanding, my understanding was more like what Tom was saying, this is zone for this, you can't have X business in here, but Mr. Smith can.
Yeah, so I can't imagine why a community would do that, rather than require somebody to go to zoning, or, or adopt a TIF district, or just rezone the whole area.
So did it ever happen?
I've never heard of that happening here. It doesn't mean it didn't, though.
I was thinking back, like, in Ed Jansen days, or, you know, going way back, or anything like that.
I don't remember, but...
Before my time, that's why I presented for the board, I was unsure.
Got me, I do have one that, one, excuse me, comment. There was a rumor online about cats coming back to request condition, to request a change in the condition of approval. And, I mean, I thought it said that they were gonna be here, which I didn't think was proper, because I just, I didn't talk to them at all. I emailed Dan and told him what I thought the process should be, and not to just show up. So I'm actually glad to see that he's not here, but did you get anything from him saying that he was gonna?
No, so I'm hoping that he's gonna renotice that.
Yeah.
A new application, renotice, since it's closed, and there's been a notice of decision, and it's, or a condition of approval, like, it's all done.
Yeah, it doesn't have to have another public hearing.
But like, noticing from scratch, because it's done.
See, they're all business, I didn't think that you had to do that.
To my mind, the board made a decision, he got his conditional approval, not to mention that he agreed to them, but since a decision was made, unless he wants to appeal that decision within a timeframe, you know, within the regulations to appeal the decision, but otherwise, I don't know why it would be, which I think is passed, otherwise, I don't see...
And I don't, I don't think he can do that until a plan is signed, which of course, it isn't.
But his agreement may have been a factor involved with the decision-making process that granted his approval.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yeah, I was...
But to speak to that, to speak to that, partly, you know, I do appreciate the fact that he's being forthcoming in saying that he's, would like to entertain that possibility, as opposed to other situations, and perhaps in that same zone of automotive businesses that, as I understand, said there would be some paving involved on the approval, and I go by, I don't know, about 5:30 this afternoon, it wouldn't done today, so I don't, um, and I'm not saying any names, but, and maybe I'm wrong, but I understand there were certain, certain areas to the left of the building for parking that an approval was given based on the fact it'd be paving, and there's not, so...
But they won't, but I think they have it built September, dude.
No, he's talking about a different property, or a different...
I think this is a much older approval.
Oh, my gosh.
Don't make me say names.
That is like, that is like two years, three years, I guess.
Right. But I'm saying, and am I wrong in saying that there was, partly approval decision process was that it'd be paving there? And I understand policing is a tough matter, and it's a small town, and we all have this, but...
Yeah, that, that did pop up on the radar recently, and so we're gonna have to send them a notice and go through that whole process, but yeah.
But once again, more involved in time of our staff and our resources to, to chase down something that was promised, and in defense of someone else, that, and at least being forthcoming, saying, I'd like to propose this before the board.
Sure, sure. Is this, I'm hearing that he didn't comply to the first agreement?
It's not, it's my imagination.
Kevin's talking about a completely different case that is similar, where somebody's...
Yeah, I'd rather not, I'd rather not.
So you're not mentioning, so therefore, I'm in a dark.
Well, somebody said that they would pave.
It's not that dark.
Somebody said they would pave, and then they didn't pave.
Someone in that same zone, a, a commercial enterprise in that very same zone, not too far...
You don't have to mention any names, though, anymore.
Not too far from the subject.
It's all public record, actually, you can name names.
Sure, I can, but I, I just, I think, I think that's poor.
Kevin?
No. But we all know, okay?
Yes.
Okay. You know.
I do.
So, Tom, to your point, I think we need clarification about, because the plan is not signed, does that mean that, you know, this 30-day appeal process hasn't started yet? Or, you know, I think, maybe, would you mind, like, maybe getting in touch with the municipal association to see if they would permit on process?
Sure.
That's an excellent question, I think, that would be, that's an excellent question.
Well, you know, this did, this issue did come up in relation to the, that tri-city situation.
Outback of...
Yeah, those people live flatly. It's 30 days from... Yeah, those people live flatly. It's thirty days from notice of decision.
Is it the same for ZBA and planning?
It might not, but.
I think that would be, that would make sense to me, that it would be notice of decision.
Just add a two cents, I guess, there.
But before we deny something, you know, it would be better, I think, to check.
Right, but in this case, the plan was approved.
Conditionally.
Correct. What was my point?
He's.
Well, but that's still a decision.
He's gonna contest, contest a condition of approval. Although it wasn't even necessarily a condition of approval because it was just considered on his plan set.
It was on his.
But I represented that it would be done, and once again, as a factor in the decision-making for a board.
And then, and then when he priced it out, which he, you know, one would have thought, yeah, exactly.
Absolutely, it would have been seven before he had.
I would have thought they would have.
But that might have come into, that might have had some influence on the decision-making.
Well, it certainly might have affected the plan that he presented if he'd known beforehand. Because we're holding him to, even though the plan's not signed, we're holding him to the condition that he was supposed to submit a landscaping.
Yes, and, and I thought that they were almost done with that. Did they submit one, Tom? A vegetation plan for the front? That was due within thirty days of.
Right, he was supposed to do that, that we would look at and.
Yeah, could you?
Yeah, yeah, I can, thank you.
Yeah, that would be something to stay on top of. There was some, some things that fell through the holes through that process, I think, between engineering and owner and landlord.
All right. I'm gonna show my confusion between the two boards. In terms of amendments to the, considering towards the first year and amendments to the zoning ordinances and everything else, that's still the purview of the ZBA.
No, only planning.
Planning, well, thank you. So having said that, is there anything we need to start thinking about?
New packages.
Well.
Oh, no.
No, no, I thought about that tonight. I was gonna ask Sarah, what's the deadline for doing that? No, I'm, that's, I'm gonna.
I look forward to discussing.
It's in our ordinances that we can charge impact fees.
Yes, we do, and my only comment is, well, I have two comments. A, it's a whole lot of administrative work to keep track of. And B, you have to keep track of the money and prove that you used it for whatever purposes and keep it in escrow, or else you're giving it back. So you also have to keep track of, do you need to give the money back, or did we actually need it? But to your point, John, though, I think this board needs to be very aware of the fact that we have large parcels of land that are owned by people who are retired or nearing retirement age. And there's reason to believe that large parcels will become developed anytime now. And the Bear Road property, fifty acres, you know, is now just a single family home, but that's a good, you know, we kind of scraped by that. That could have been a very significant development. So the master plan is, I hope to be on the ballot for this upcoming year so that we can get clarity from the public around what this community ought to look like over the upcoming ten years. But we need to really look at the regulations to see how can we make that development when it happens look like what this community wants it to look like and where they want it to be. Control it however it ought to be controlled. And so I don't know if impact fees is the answer, but I don't want to be completely dismissive of it either. I just think it really involves maybe a discussion with the select board about providing the staff time to deal with it, really.
Well, both your concerns are administrative, you know, monitoring it and also accounting for it and making sure to use or return it. It's still all one person watching the money, and it's more than can be placed on any current staff because they're already working at the capacity of their position.
Well, and when you consider that you're doing impact fees times a hundred houses happening all in pretty short order, that's incredibly burdensome and distracting from other ongoing responsibilities.
It could be a total disaster, it really could be.
Well, I also have to point out that in order to, you have to apply impact fees to projects that have had studies conducted. I mean, you can't just randomly say we're gonna give it to the school. You have to, to like have a project that spans schools and put those funds toward. It's, it's not, it sounds like easy money, but there's a lot of work that goes into doing it.
I could get full-time positions, yeah, doing all the research, and proof, you have to prove these things.
Right, because that's right.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and the proof is, you know, if we're gonna build a, yeah, like a six million dollar renovation to the school divided by, you know, like you have to do some math and show how you come up with a school impact fee. And then would it affect other departments so that, you know, maybe you have a fire impact fee or a police impact fee? But what are you calculating that against? Because if you're not gonna make a capital improvement, you know, to put in the math equation, you can't just collect money for the sake of collecting money.
So you're saying you couldn't assume that workload? No, it's a full-time job.
Kevin, are you volunteering?
No, not right now with everything else that's going on.
No, and no, regardless, regardless, anyone in, I mean, no one really can. It's quite involved and there's quite a bit of responsibility and accountability, you know, and and I, you know, I know I'm not against you on that fact, I just look at that one component on what we have for staffing and.
How does the Ola handle this pandemic situation?
Give it to the finance department.
So the finance department takes care of it. Yeah, we, the town, the city collects the fees and then brings them on the finance.
They oversee all improvements and the divvying.
Oh, no, 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 they oversee all the accounts and.
Just the, just the money.
Right, right. And then if something comes up that needs to be, it's like Caroline said, new police station, for instance, how much should be allocated to that from the impact fees?
Right.
And.
Who does that calculate? That seems like a burdensome job.
That's, yeah, that's the planning department.
And how many, how many.
Some of the regulations.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, how many are on staff in the planning department?
Seven.
Yeah, they have a finance department.
And finance.
They have a finance department?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure a lot of these studies are subbed out, contracted out to experts and, you know.
But I, and I think that like the towns do pay out of pocket for all that work to be done ahead of anticipated impact.
You gotta pay the people that are doing the work, yeah.
Right, if the cause is sound and defensible and justifiable, I think that it could be done.
But to your point, though, like justifiable and all this, when you figure out, when you pay all of these professionals to figure that out, I don't know if that goes into the accounting of what the impact fee is, but when you put all this administrative work together and hiring the professionals to figure out what needs to happen to the school and the police department and all of these other departments to accommodate the development, can you account for the administrative oversight of even that process before you even engage in those projects? Because, you know, if that pays for a person, that pays for a person, but if it doesn't, then that's just a loss. That doesn't really.
So you're saying the town will be responsible for paying for the surveys and the.
Well, yes, if we want impact fees, we have to prove that the school is gonna have to grow and what is that?
But that can come from impact fees.
Well, it can, but we have to prove it first. And so maybe, I'm wondering, like possibly the study to figure out, for example, what has to happen to the school, maybe that study can be accounted for in the impact fees. But the administrative cost of finding somebody to do the study and coordinating them and meeting them over there and getting the quote, and then taking the engineering study and then divvying that up and figuring out what that means as far as an impact fee? Like all that work, I don't know, is covered.
I don't think it is because there'd be a potential of finding that you, that there's no reason for an impact because it's a project.
It doesn't work, yeah, it doesn't work. Then you would have to eat that cost.
Right.
So you have to, once again, have an administrator that's very competent and knowledgeable of these scenarios of what a police station costs and what the new school costs and what the requirement is and what the, you know, what the growth in the population is you know, as far as what that requires for schooling, so.
But to John's point, though, about what are we gonna be thinking about for the zoning ordinance? I think it would be worthwhile for people to review the zoning ordinance and think about our challenges and the kinds of cases we've seen and some of the administrative difficulties of some of these cases to see what could be improved. There were a couple of amendments that didn't go on the ballot last year in an effort to keep the ballot more concise because of the pandemic. But also, just in light of inevitable pending major development, you know, with that lens, is there something that should change in the regulations? Do we wanna prescribe aesthetics? Do, you know, do we wanna, you know, insert any kind of, for example, green development? Like that's another, because we're, so the subcommittee met with Kevin and Tom and I around getting our planning regulations audited for stormwater compliance. Perhaps inserting language to require certain development to be green. For example, installing rain gardens or having green roofs and things like that. Like that will be, those suggestions are coming down the line. So they may be partially in zoning. I think they're mostly gonna be in subdivision and site review, but they may partially be in zoning.
Are there really towns, we know, or cities that have those kind of regulations, green to green?
The strat regional planning is pulling them, they'll come up with regulations. Yeah.
And I think developments are coming. I mean, I think as the older generation passes and the younger generation, and I'm not judging, but I think that, you know, money can be pretty reliable to the younger generation and even the big parcel that's sold on there, that nothing says that that guy can't take a son home in Hawaii and decide to sell that property. I mean, that could certainly happen too.
There's a twenty-one acre parcel that recently sold too, and that would be developed probably in a cluster subdivision, so.
But it'd be good to be thinking about this before he's hit, and then you're reactive as opposed to, you know.
Yes.
So what's the deadline for putting impact fees on the board of hearing? Can we just say, go on agenda for next?
So I would say, look at the zoning.
We did the hearings in January.
What's that?
We did the hearings in January.
Okay.
I think there's the first one in December and then the second one, and yeah, we typically do it the first in January, but I think there's a first one.
And we do, we discuss the meeting and the hearing, yeah.
Yes, you discuss it in January. But I would say look at the regulation, look at the zoning to see what it says about impact fees. And then we need to think about how that language might change.
Okay.
Administrative costs.
Yes.
But I would encourage us all to review the regulations and think about every upcoming meeting between now and December, considering what maybe ought to change.
This, oh, Tom, you had mentioned possibly deleting the requirement for a hearing for eighty years.
Yes.
With the conditional use for.
Yeah, but that would be a zoning, excuse me, zoning ordinance, and we have to go.
Yeah, well, I think Caroline was saying.
I think that was one that you had suggested we do last year that we tabled.
Oh, okay.
But the building permit process would take care of whether or not a proposed accessory dwelling unit meets the regulations. So Tom would look for that anyway for the building permit application. And if it doesn't comply with zoning, it goes to ZBA. So it's for us to consider what is the value to the town or to the applicant in reviewing accessory dwelling unit applications.
Especially, I may add, two-family dwelling does not require it. So if someone applies for a permit for a duplex, if it's an allowed use, it's just the building permit process. And doesn't need any further approval from zoning or planning.
To be built as a two, as a two unit.
Say again?
To be built as a two unit.
Yes.
As opposed to when you'd be an ad tri existent single.
Right, right.
I have to run, I just got a message I have to run. So.
Any other promotion?
Yes. Is there a second? Oh, if they would say hi, hi. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Tom, I think it's clarification, I was reading them up, it's. Blood.
Yep.